Call to order, the regular meeting for Thursday, July 5th, 2018. I want to remind everybody to please silence your phones and electronic devices. If you have any blue slips, please bring them to Ms. Jessica prior to the item coming up. We'll have our invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Guidry.
May roll bow his, please. Heavenly Father, we come this evening in the most humble and gracious way that we know how as your Christian people. We ask in a special blessing upon Calqueshoe Parish, the city of Lake Charles, and the entire state of Louisiana, so that we can come together and do the work of you as our most heavenly Savior. Father, we ask that there are a lot of things that are happening in the world today. Father, we just ask that you lift up those families that are going through a crucial time in their lives, Father, for losing a loved one or just being in a desperate situation to where actions were taken that may have caused a family member to be lost. Father, we honor you and we uplift you in all the things that we do. Heavenly Father, we ask these many blessings in your son named Jesus. Amen.
May we face the flag, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Guidry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Item three, roll call, please, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir, Mr. Upsher.
Here.
Mr. Anticott.
Here.
Mr. Brings unable to attend this evening. Mr. Collins.
Present.
Mr. Fornum.
Here.
Mr. Guidry.
Here.
Mr. Lantry.
Here.
Mr. Luth.
Did you bring all that?
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Mr. McMillan is out of town this evening. Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie.
Here.
Vice President White.
Here.
And Christopher.
Here, thank you. Item number four, presentation of the comprehensive annual financial report, CAFR, for the year ended December 31st, 2017. Ms. Buffkin.
We're pleased to present the annual financial report tonight, and we have Kyle Judeece from McCoy Quirk and Birch here to present the report.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to discuss the Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury's Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, also known as the CAFR, and the separate compliance and internal control reports for the year ended December 31st, 2017. First, congratulations are once again in order to the police jury on receiving the GFOA's Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for the 2016 report. This is the 26th year in a row the police jury has received this award. Not only demonstrates compliance with applicable governmental and generally accepted accounting and auditing standards, but is also an extremely valuable tool in obtaining favorable financing when needed. As is the custom, the 2017 report will also be submitted to the GFOA, and we believe that it is also worthy of similar recognition. First, I'd like to do a brief overview of the CAFR. It's the largest of the bound reports that you have. It's divided up into three sections noted by the yellow tabs, the introductory section, the financial section, and the statistical section. The introductory section includes the transmit letter, the prior year GFOA certificate, which we just mentioned, an organizational chart, and a list of principal officials. The second section is the financial section. It includes the independent auditor's report, management's discussion and analysis, the basic financial statements, and the notes to those financial statements. The independent auditor's report, the purpose of our audit is to render an opinion on whether the financial statements are free of material misstatements. We have issued an unmodified opinion, which means that the financial statements are free of material misstatements, and that you can rely on these financial statements. Following the independent auditor's report is management's discussion and analysis. This is an excellent executive summary of the financial condition of the parish. Following the MDNA is the basic financial statements made up of the statement of net position, statement of activities, as well as supplementary statements, followed by the notes to the financial statements, which provide more detail about the financial statements and are an excellent way to dig down into the details of the numbers on the financial statements. The last section is the statistical section, and it provides more information to the reader and aids in understanding the financial activities of the police jury. Again, we've issued an unmodified opinion, which means that you can rely on the financial statements in the CAFR. Secondly, I'd like to do a brief overview of the report on internal control and compliance, which is the smaller green bound report. This report contains the report on internal control, which simply describes the scope of our testing. It also includes the report on compliance, which states that Calqueshoe Parish Police Jury is in compliance in regards to their federal awards program. Also included in this report is the schedule of expenditures of federal awards, which details the federal assistance received by the primary government during 2017 of approximately 17 million, and an additional $4 million received by the component units of the parish. Also included in this report are various recommendations for improving internal control and compliance for some of the component units within the parish. And then the last report I'd like to briefly discuss is the smaller gray one. This is actually a new report for the year. Louisiana Legislative Order has required all local governments to go through agreed-upon procedures. These are a set of procedures designed to perform to ascertain the practices of local governments throughout the state. Any deviations noted during the agreed-upon procedures are to be disclosed as exceptions, and the police jury should be very proud to know that you had no exceptions when applying the agreed-upon procedures test work. In conclusion, I'd like to thank the staff for all their cooperation throughout the course of our audit, and especially like to thank Ms. Buffkin, Ms. Kelly Fontenot, Ms. Judy Hewlett, and Ms. Lindsay Merchant for all of their help throughout the course of our audit and our engagement, and we would like to say thank you for allowing us to provide audit services to the police jury.
Do we have any questions? Move to receive report.
Second.
Have a motion to receive report by Mr. White and second by Mr. Collins. Any objection? Any discussion?
I got a question for him.
Mr. Landry.
How far do you go into any of the district financials? I don't know. Do we do all of these special service district financials, or are there still some that are doing their own? Or maybe that's for Ms. Buffkin, whoever can answer.
Mr. Landry, we do some of them. The inside financials, we do some of them. Some of them still do their own, but we incorporate even those that are outside our financial system into this document. So they're all in this document.
But those that are doing their own or having them done, are they turning in that information to your office?
Yes, they are.
They do?
Yes.
Do y'all audit that and check it, or does his company audit?
Actually, they're separately audited by...
Okay, so they are being audited?
Yes, they are.
There weren't any findings in those audits, were there?
Yes, then those would be noted in the green compliance report.
That's in the green?
And if those other districts did have findings, we reference those independent auditor's reports, and you can find those, probably request them by Tammy or those districts, or find them on Legislative Auditor's website.
Well, I won't get into all that tonight, but at least we know where we can find those things. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Landry. Any further discussion? Thank you, sir. Item carries. Item five, receive report from staff on the progress of the police jury's strategic planning efforts. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. And members of the jury, when we started this strategic planning process in late February, I lost it there, Tom, we committed to coming to you periodically so that we could report to you and the general public where we are in the process. And we've made a lot of good process in the last couple of months since May 3rd, when I last came up here to the podium to report to you. So tonight, we want to give you an update and certainly answer any questions you may have or hear any comments you may have. The outline tonight is fairly straightforward. I want to cover where we are on the timeline, what we have been working on, what we've accomplished. I'll cover some of the highlights of the citizen survey feedback that was completed in May. And then, of course, after a lot of work, y'all have narrowed down to six priority focus areas for us to work with, and that's a big step. And then I'll end it with where we go from here. This is our timeline we had from the beginning. We are in July in the process, and we are on track. I'm very pleased with how much progress we've made, and we feel very strongly that we can complete the process as scheduled before the year's out. So as you can see where we are here, and I'll get into this later, we're at the departmental meeting stage over the next three months, and that's going to be a lot of nuts and bolts work as we go forward. But what has happened to date? Well, we had a lot of input. As you will recall, the process included a lot of the research on earlier studies that have been done. We did a full-fledged employee survey for this, and then, as I'll get to in a moment, the citizen survey was a separate part. That led to a department leader workshop on May 23rd, where we had a lot of that information and were able to take what was a big list of priorities from the public input, and we came up with a set of priorities. And then, of course, at your retreat on June 8th, you were able to narrow that down. So that is a lot of work in just a couple of months, and it's allowed us to take the next step. So I'm going to spend a little time, what did the citizens tell us in this survey? And by the way, this is just one tool. It's a very important tool, but there's a lot of different things we did to build these priority options for y'all to look at. But what did they have to say? First thing to point out, we were very happy to see that the whole parish participated well. Matter of fact, it was uncanny how much the percentage of respondents were representative of those areas. For example, if you look at Lake Charles, 38% of our respondents are in the Lake Charles area. That's about how much is the percentage of population Lake Charles is of the whole parish. Same with Dequincy, Sulfur, and all the rest. So it's good to see that you got a well-represented survey. So what did they say when asked what their most frequent interaction was with the parish in the last six months? Now, little disclaimer here, it's very understandable. The general public has to deal with all sorts of government agencies. So sometimes, some of the answers, it's mostly going to be good, but they're not exactly sure who does what. So just be aware of that. That's not good or bad. It's just, it just is. But by far, you can see the big interaction is people like visiting your parks. Parks are so popular, and there's good reason for that, and it's a very positive impact. Some people, you can see about 19%, really didn't have any official interactions with the parish. But a couple other highlights, it's very common to have public works, work order, services, a permit request in planning, that kind of thing. That was a big category. Paying a bill, that's probably mainly our water district folks. You go over here, though, y'all know this already, but a good amount of people use our solid waste disposal sites on both sides of the river. So that was not really a surprise, but it gives you an idea of what, how people interact with the parish. When asked what most services most important to them, again, not big surprises here, public works and planning and development, think about, especially in a growing population and growing economy, you're going to have a lot of needs that deal with roads, drainage, that sort of thing, infrastructure, and that falls generally under public works. With planning and development, we have so many permits, and you have to get licenses and things. So again, because of our growth, not unexpected, I want to say this, a shout out to Scott Willis and his department. I thought the mosquito control thing was kind of low, but that's probably because people aren't as bothered by mosquitoes. I can tell you, if we weren't doing a good job with that, that would be the highest one, but because Scott and his team do great, it kind of fell in with the rest of the things. But this gives you a good feel for some of the interactions and what people think is important. So, I was a little scared of this question. I didn't know, but I feel a lot better with the answers. What about your interactions with parish employees? I'm only scared, I know they're good, but you don't know until the people answer. The answer is very good. Out of the bunch, you only have about 10% that say their interactions with parish employees would be considered in the bad category. The rest are good, very good, or adequate, and we feel pretty good about that. This was a good eye-opener. As someone in his mid-50s still trying, you know, I'm a newspaper reader, TV guy, dabble on social media, well, I'm in the minority. So 34%, which is more than double of any other category, people getting their information about the parish, and everything for that matter, through Facebook, Twitter, and so forth. Now, that tells us a lot, and it gives us a lot of direction as to how to get information out. And we do use those, but we need to make sure we understand that, and we have to go where the people are. We can't decide, here's where we're going to put it and hope they go. What we try to do is cover all the bases, but this tells us, those videos we do that are three and four minutes, that feature certain services y'all provide, or that's where we do a lot of recruiting now on social media. A lot of our applications are because of how we're using social media. This tells us a lot, gives us some good direction. Okay, so let's get to the themes. These are, it's just this one slide, but these are the main themes that came out of all these surveys. It was a good response. I'll hit on these quickly. If you have any comments you want to add or have any question, that's fine. I know y'all seen this already. This is kind of, the first one, it's kind of an overriding way to look at it. That is, all these responses are from people, and think of the lens through which they're answering these questions. So much growth is put, it's a very good thing, but it puts demand on services such that what they're saying is, hey, we really are concerned about certain things, and the biggie, this gets to the second one, out of all the infrastructure's the big one. That means roads, drainage, water, sewer, but as I put up there four times, drainage in bold. People are very concerned of drainage, very glad to see the things we're doing with drainage, but the growth makes people nervous in that sense. Are we going to be able to keep up with that? Traffic congestion, no, the biggie, obviously, okay? I don't think anybody's shocked at those. If they didn't show up, I'd say I was a little concerned about that. The third one, you want to be careful not to misinterpret this. There's a desire for more equitable focus around the parish for distinct needs. I think it's the old, it's a little bit of human nature, because I asked the consultants we're working with, and John and Seth are the guys with Emergent Method, I said, what are you hearing here? You have urban, rural, and suburban. Well, the general answer is each area, if there's kind of themes that they think they're kind of being forgotten about. And I think, again, with all this growth, there's this concern, they're getting lost in the shuffle. Maybe they think, well, I'm having trouble, they must be doing better. All this tells me is that we need to certainly look at the way we distribute services, but it also means we are guilty occasionally of not saying enough of what we do for the folks. Y'all do a lot for the people, the parish. They don't always know it. They may know what it is, but maybe they don't tie it to the police jury. So that gives us some good, good direction into how to communicate, as well as provide service throughout the parish in a well-distributed way. The fourth bullet, again, I mentioned this earlier, this isn't unique to us. People really don't understand who provides what, and I don't want to say this badly, but they don't care. What they care about, if they have a drainage problem, or a road problem, or any other problem, is they like it taken care of. I think they care about, people, don't get me wrong, but they want us to do whatever we got to do to work together to address the problem. But this is an old issue we've had since I've been here and probably before, and I know y'all get calls, and they go, well, who do I call? Well, that's not us, that's this, or that's, and they get frustrated just because they just need somebody to talk to. So they said that in the results. Second to last one, this is helpful for us, better coordination among government agencies with a focus on the resident. Again, think about all the growth, especially people who've been here a long time. I think there's a little bit of nervousness. Is our little neighborhood, is our area that used to be quieter and less populated going to change? A lot of that seems to come through these answers. And so they want us to make sure we're working good with the other cities, special districts, state agencies, so forth. And then the last one, again, more at the neighborhood level, better action responsiveness based on requests. Go back to social media, second. One thing that's changed is, I don't like it, but it doesn't matter what I like. In the old days, if you didn't get something addressed that you thought should have been addressed quicker, well, okay, that's fine, you don't agree. Well, now they can put that on Facebook, and everybody's reading it and saying, let me tell you about what happened with my experience with the parish. Is that fair? I don't think so, but it exists, so we have to make sure, we can't stop all that, but we can make sure we get better at being responsive and answering questions in a timely manner. I hit a lot of that quickly, but before I go to the next slide, any comments, questions on the key themes before I go on? This helps drive what y'all worked on to help with the priorities. Okay? And then one more, before we get into the priority setting, this was a good, I like this question. What does quality of life in Calqueshoe Parish mean to you? Keep in mind, you've got people that answered this from all over the parish, rural, cities, suburban. I kind of got a chuckle out of the top one. I think every citizen in the country, this is their first answer. We want a lot of equitable services that are efficient with low taxes. So kind of got that one checked on. More transportation options, AKA less traffic, better roads. I think when you dig down, the congestion seems to be the problem. If it means wider roads, bigger roads, longer roads, other types of transportation, whatever it takes, this is, to nobody's surprise, something they mentioned. Public safety, that's certainly a biggie. Good schools, got to have good schools if we're going to progress. Curb appeal and the rest of these, especially public spaces and so forth, you're seeing a lot more, I believe, in the last 10 years on quality of life type things, other than just your basic infrastructure. And y'all have mentioned it a lot, we'll get to that. Litter, the litter problem is a big deal, and people agree with you that it's a big deal. Affordable housing, and by the way, these are not in ranked order, they're just all together. So when you see good drainage at the bottom, don't take it to mean that's way down the list. It just happens to be where it landed. Okay, that's what we heard, and again, other forms of input, but the survey and so forth allowed us as department leaders and administration to take what are, I'll go over the process, we were able to get about 40 priorities out of all of this. And I'm paraphrasing, but it's the money one said, if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority. You can't do everything and do it with the same focus. There's only so many resources, both manpower and finances. So you got to narrow that down. And we tried, we got to about 12 priorities through the departmental process. Y'all took that, ran with it, and we tried to get in your workshop about five to eight. We ended up with six priorities. These are general priority areas, not nuts and bolts, but it helps us tremendously to go from here. And let me go ahead, and most of the rest of the presentation is just to hit those priority areas which will allow us to go forward. So it's just two slides. First one, and again, this is all what culminated in your retreat on June 8th, and I'm hitting the points that y'all came up with through there. So y'all seen this, but not since, not since that day. Greater efficiencies in resources between the police jury and other public entities, including special districts, because a lot of services are provided through those, to be more responsive and to reduce duplication. The more we talked about duplication, I think kind of includes coordination. So for example, I know I use this a lot, but with drainage, okay, it might be you, it might be the district, it might be the city, but whatever it is, try to coordinate it so I don't have to go to all these different people, that kind of thing. The second one, long-term infrastructure needs. And here's, I should have had it underlined, and implementation of solutions to these needs, including public-private partnerships. Y'all were very key in your discussions on these, to say, look, we can say all day what we need, but we need to follow through. And that, we took that to heart, made sure we put that in there. Third one, build upon recent and ongoing efforts related to parish-wide drainage improvements and at a watershed level. Y'all affirmed that drainage, which by far continues to be the public's top defined need, let's keep that going and make sure we do it on a watershed level, which means we're looking at that big picture, and although it's not written up there, it's included. Short term and long term. Watershed planning takes years. We need to take care of some hotspots today, too, but y'all said, continue this work, looking ahead. Okay, the other three. Facilitate development. When development occurs, the emphasis on standards and zoning that take into account all areas of the parish, that is, this probably, Dennis, I know you've been waiting a long time, this isn't just fringe standards, but it says, look, when you develop, take a look, like y'all did, I'll use an example, the recent West Calvary zoning, which of course is very large. If you kind of step back and take a look at that bigger picture, it's looking at a good development set of standards that consider you're going to transition from urban to suburban to industrial and back, and to make sure you look at that whole picture, not just what's being proposed there. Look at how it connects to what's near it and so forth, what's in the cities. Try to have some coordinated standards in cities and parish, that's a big deal. We've already going toward that, but we got a long way to go. Number five, and we have six total, strong quality of life measures that make our parish a place people want to call home for years to come. We love what y'all put in there for years to come, and it means you got to do a lot of things, but can't just do roads and bridges. Those are critical, but it's more than that when you live in a place. And then lastly, not least, more environmentally friendly community, reducing, out of all that list, we, you know, we heard a lot from you, reducing litter is a big deal. But also water quality, and I want to hats off to Dennis again, that we've come a long way in drainage, we got a lot to do, but we have a good plan to implement, but it's been focused on flooding. You also need to look at the quality of the water, and that ties to quality of life. People go boating, people go fishing. For our locals and people that are going to move here, we've got so much water, it's just critical we not only make sure it doesn't flood, but that it's good quality water for various reasons. And y'all made that a priority. So those are the top six. There's a lot that falls under that. This is my last slide. I certainly can go back to any of these you want, but what we do is take those six priority areas y'all have defined for us, and we will work individually with each department over the next three months to say, how do we set your goals that align with those areas? A lot of what we're doing already, I think, will fit, but we have to tie it to that, and we're going to have to add some things that y'all have brought up. So between now and September, we'll be working on that. We do, pretty soon here, we want to revisit our mission statement. It may or may not change. We'll get a few jurors, a few staff together, try to have something to propose for the final document. final document. The core values are very common in strategic plans. That's where the goals are the what you want to do. The core values are, who are we? What do we stand for at the police jury? There's a lot of different things you can come up with for that, but probably five of those tops. But it's like guiding principles when we did the strategic plan for drainage, that's the same kind of idea. And then this gets in the weeds a bit, but as we get toward the end of the year, we will establish a lot of performance measures, so as we have this plan, next year and ongoing, we will have a lot of actual defined measures that we use to say, "How well are we doing this?" So, that's it. Lot of information to cover, but we're right on track with our timing. We're now getting into the details, which is good, I think we're ready. But we really needed your leadership and guidance, and we appreciate your interest. Y'all had a, just, I think, a great session recently, and it showed us what you're passionate about and what you're willing to work on to achieve those goals. So with that, I certainly am trying to answer any questions. If not, we will continue going with what you have outlined for us over the next few months, if you have no objections to that.
Thank you, Mr. Beam. I believe we do have some discussion. Mr. Andrew Pont.
Thank you, Mr. President. Brian, I want to thank you and staff for having the vision and the foresight for even moving forward with this. You stepped out of the comfort zone, for the lack of a better phrase, and there's much growth in activities we have going on in Calquash Parish. I think this is an excellent program to bring us into the next phase of where we're headed in the future. And I think I speak on behalf of the entire body, because this is huge, it really is. And to have the vision that y'all had to put this thing together, I think...
Thank you.
Kudos to all of you.
Are you back, sir?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. White.
Also, I'd like to follow up. Mr. Andrew Pont said, "I thank everybody that participated in this and is continuing to do it, but it's the follow-through that means the most. To achieve our goals for Calquash Parish, we must follow through what we said we're gonna do and continue to do it the right direction that we need to do it in."
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. White. Mr. Scott.
As long as we're talking drainage and stormwater, you know, I hope we're not gonna wait till January to continue to do some of the things we need to do to move forward with collaboration with the parish and the cities, continue to work on stormwater being parish-wide. I believe that's something we should be able to do as a body rather quickly. I don't think there's a whole lot we need to discuss, other than making sure everybody knows what it is. If nothing else, really bringing the educational part to the parish, so they understand as we move forward with it. And the last thing, there's a socio-economic group in this parish of 55,000 veterans, and that is 25% of our parish. That is a huge number when it comes to economic development. So if we can, maybe it doesn't fall into the strategic planning part, but somehow, 25% of your population, if we're not focusing on that group for the economic value that it has from the federal government down to this parish, you know, I think we're missing the boat on that. So we're gonna continue to work towards the veterans' part and see if we can't group it together. Mr. Boland and myself have been really working with the mayor lately, so we're hoping that's gonna begin to take shape here soon. So thanks for what you're doing, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. President, if I could comment on that, I'm glad Dennis brought that up, not just for drainage. Absolutely, we're not stopping on that. The strategic planning, we don't wait and say, "What do we do?" A lot of what we're already doing, drainage, great example, that was basically a primer for what we're already doing. That was a strategic plan, we are now implementing it, and we are going full steam, not waiting on this. The fact that y'all said it's a priority to affirm and keep moving just makes it that much easier. So a lot... There's nobody gonna be sitting waiting for that or the roads, it's just gonna be sort of redirected as needed. But I want to assure you on that and others, and Tim, of course, and the roads, it's, none of that's gonna stop. Thank you.
Motion to receive report. Second. We got a motion to receive report by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Landry. Any further discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item number six, take appropriate action on applications for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane.
Mr. President, we have four applications before you tonight, recommend they be approved.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Landry and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Consideration of approving payment of all current invoices. I have a motion by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item eight, consideration of approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the police jury dated June 7, 2018. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery and a second by Mr. Abshire. We have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item nine, consideration of approving the public works committee report dated June 28, 2018.
So move.
Item A, received report from staff regarding the 2018 annual rabies vaccination clinics. B, recommended approving expropriation of property for the Carless Drive Extension Phase Two project. C, recommended approving act of sale agreements for the Carless Drive Extension Phase Two project. D, recommended approving an act of sale agreement with a drainage servitude for the Carless Drive Extension Phase Two project. E, recommended approving agreements for the Patton Street Bridge Replacement Project. F, recommended approving an act of sale agreement for the Johnny Bro Road Extension Project. G, recommended approving utilities and drainage servitude agreements for the Johnny Bro Road Extension Project. H, recommended approving a temporary construction servitude agreement for the Johnny Bro Road Extension Project. I, recommended approving expropriation of property for the Johnny Bro Road Extension Project. J, recommended approving the submittal of a loan application on behalf of Sewer District Number 11 of Wards Three and Eight for funding assistance to clean sludge in the wastewater lagoon. K, recommended approving a professional engineering services agreement for services and design related to the clearing and snagging of various drainage laterals in Calquash Parish. L, recommended approving an amendment to the Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the police jury and AE Comm Technical Services Incorporated for the increased services as a result of the purchase of additional property for Contraband Bayou Regional Detention Facility. M, recommended accepting the following subdivisions. Holbrook Court Phase Two subdivision, two. Waterside Two at Morganfield subdivision, three. The Meadows Phase Four subdivision, four. Zoe's Place subdivision, five. Dreamview Estates Phase Three subdivision, six. Blue Woods Estates Phase One Block Two subdivision, seven. Blue Woods Estate Estates Phase One Block Three subdivision. N, recommended to advertise for Calquash Parish Project Number 18 PW-0015, drainage improvements of various roads in Wards One, Two, Three, Four, and Eight. Got a motion by Mr... Uh, excuse me, Ms. Trimming, and a second by Mr. Landry. We have any discussion? Mr. Scott.
On N, Mr. Connor, does that coincide with next year overlaying them? So we had talked about that before. So in all these drainage projects, are they, a lot of them being fixed so that next year we overlay them, or Mr. Wayne Ryan, however you want?
Mr. Wayne Ryan.
This batch is actually not the 2019 in-advance batch. That, we should get an item out forelawn on that batch you're referring to, so that we can get ahead one year in front of Tim. This is, where batches really the hotspots that were just sort of randomly around the parish based off of comments and complaints, and that are in a pretty big bundles. There's a couple more bundles working their way through the process of design, and we hope to get those out pretty soon.
Cool. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any further discussion? Any objections? Oh, Mr. Latour.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Tim, would Booth Road be on that by any chance?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, thank you. All right, now you'll be up, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 10, consideration of approving the agenda committee report dated June 28, 2018. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont to accept and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 11, adopting an ordinance to levy the following 2018 maintenance tax millage rates.
So move.
Criminal justice system maintenance, 3.2 mills, 3.02 mills. Courthouse complex and correctional center maintenance, 3.12 mills. Mosquito control maintenance, 2.30 mills. Airport District Number One maintenance, 0.60 mill. Burton Coliseum and Agricultural Services Maintenance, 1.43 mills. Health unit maintenance, 2.37 mills. Juvenile detention maintenance, 3.33 mills. Road and drainage maintenance, 3.88 mills. Ward Three Fire Protection District Number Two Maintenance, 11.54 mills. Library maintenance, 5.51 mills. Sewage District Number 11 of Wards Three and Eight Maintenance, 9.00 mills. Water Works District Number Five of Wards Three and Eight Maintenance, 5.24 mills. Water Works District Number Two of Ward Four Maintenance, 6.38 mills. Got a motion by Mrs. Trimming and a second by Mr. Landry... Uh, Mr. Andrew Pont, excuse me, by Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Real quick, how much money, revenue does a mill generate now? Just roughly. Two million?
About $2 million, parish-wide.
Yes. That's more than I thought, but that's good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 12, adopting ordinance to levy the following 2018 general purposes tax millage rates. Calquash Parish, except City of Lake Charles, Town of Vinton, City of Dequincy, City of Salford, and City of Westlake, 4.18 mills. Calquash Parish, within corporate limits of City of Lake Charles, Town of Vinton, City of Dequincy, City of Salford, and City of Westlake, 2.09 mills. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Thirteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the call for a special bond and tax election by the Board of Commissioners of Ward Four Fire Protection District Number Four to be held on December 8, 2018 for authorization to issue bonds not exceeding $5 million for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, maintaining, and operating fire protection facilities, machinery, and equipment. I have a motion by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Abshire. We have any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Fourteen, consideration of adopting a resolution approving a cooperative endeavor agreement between the police jury and the Louisiana State University Ag Center for the continued services provided by the Cooperative Extension Service and the police jury's continued financial support of those services. We have a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Item 15, consideration of authorizing the Director of the Division of Planning and Development to notify the following property owners to show calls at a meeting hearing, at a public hearing on August 23, 2018, as to why the structures on the properties as stipulated should not be condemned. Item A, 2274 Dennison Road, LeBlue Settlement Area. B, 2336 OJ Road, LeBlue Settlement Area. C, 1044 Live Oak Street, Salford Area. D, West Burton Street, Salford Area. E, 3260 Gil Drive, North Salford Area. F, 252 Stanley Road, Vinton Area. G, 1698 Arledge Road, Vinton Area. And H, 133 Crane Road, Vinton Area. I have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Sixteen, consideration of adopting a resolution indicating no objection to the proposed project by David P. Gilery to construct a tuba boathouse slip and replace the existing bulkhead on Contraband Bayou located at 1137 Lafitte Street, Lake Charles. Have a motion by Mr. Abshire and a second by Mr. Andrew Pont. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. Consideration of adopting resolutions for each of the following items as requested by the Human Services Department. A, approving a grant agreement for the FY 2018, FY 2019 Workforce Innovations and Opportunity Act Title I funding allocation. And B, acknowledge the submittal of minutes from the Calquash Parish Human Services Advisory Board for a meeting held on February 20, 2018. I have a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objections? Item carries. Item 18, take appropriate action on bids received by the parish purchasing agent for the following. A, Calquash Parish Project Number 2018-06. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $331,086 of Stars and Stripes Traffic Systems LLC be accepted. B, Calquash Parish Project Number 2017-08. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $18 million... Second. $360,563 of HD Truck and Tractor LLC be accepted. I have a... Excuse me, I've got one more. C, Calquash Parish Project Number 2018-07. The parish engineer recommends that the low bid in the amount of $872,972.20 of WE McDonald &amp; Son LLC be accepted. D, sale and removal of a house located at 5691 Big Lake Road in Lake Charles. Staff request permission to re-advertise for bids and/or utilize gov deals to sell the house. E, aluminum pipe, create concrete pipe, metal pipe, and creosoted bridge lumber. Aluminum pipe, staff recommends the low bid, responsive bid of Coastal Covert be accepted. Concrete pipe, staff recommends the low respective and responsive bids of DP Concrete Products LLC and Forterra Pipe and Precast LLC be accepted. Metal pipe, staff recommends the low respective and responsive bids of Coastal Covert and Seabreeze Covert be accepted. Staff also request permission to re-advertise for items that did not receive a bid. Creosoted bridge lumber, staff recommends that the low responsive bid of Bayou Forest Products Incorporated be accepted. Staff also request permission to re-advertise for items that did not receive a bid. F, archive banker boxes. The staff recommends the low responsive bid of Unity Education Resources be accepted. We have a motion by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Guidry. Mr. Landry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We may consider holding off on item B, because since Mr. McMillan's not here, we wouldn't want to do that without him. He could probably go on for five or six minutes talking about that again. That's not really why I asked to speak, but anyway, the house, item D. The house that's for sale, Mr. Connor, are you handling that deal? I drove by there and saw that house, and I don't think I'd give you $10 for it, but maybe it's worth more than... I mean, the house is in pretty good shape.
Mr. Landry, the house is in real good shape, but what happened is someone has expressed an interest in buying the house, and so we did put an opportunity for them to bid on that, but I think, since then, I don't think we received any bids, so evidently the interest has fallen off.
Those things are very expensive to move. Y'all may send a notice to these house-moving people? I mean, because obviously, there are... I mean, 'cause obviously, they're already in that business. They can move it for just about nothing on a day, maybe when their guys don't have a job. Maybe you can unload it like that. I guess you hate to tear it down. Is that where that road and the roundabouts coming through right there, or is that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought that's what that was.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Scott.
As long as you brought it up, it's probably cheaper to put it in the contract to build the road and let them tear it down? Probably not, 'cause it's nothing to tear it down instead of advertising the bid just to tear that down, just a suggestion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Any further discussion? Any objections? Motion carries. Item 19, take appropriate action on the terms of the following members of various wards and districts.
Item A, Ms. Neptheria R. Clovis, Lake Charles North Redevelopment Authority. I have a motion by Mr. Gilery-
To appoint.
To appoint.
To appoint Dr. Giselle McKinney-Hawkins.
Yes.
And a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Item B, Ms. Linda Dugots-
Move to appoint Ms. Diane Connor.
-Community Center and Playground District Number 3 of Ward 7. We have a motion to appoint Ms. Diane Connor by Mr. Farnham and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. C, Ms. Karen Douglas, Community Center and Playground-
Move to appoint Ms. Crystal Eastwood.
District Number 3 of Ward 7. I have a motion by Mr. Farnham to appoint Ms. Crystal Eastwood and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. D, Mr. Jimmy Amy-
Move to reappoint Mr. Jimmy Amy.
Water Works District Number 12 of Ward 3. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. Amy by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. E.
I'd like to move to reappoint Honorable Dennis Scott.
Honorable Dennis Scott, Southwest Louisiana Regional Planning Commission Board of Directors. We have a motion to reappoint the Honorable Dennis Scott by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? I, item carries. F, Mr. Michael Aldemall-
Move to reappoint Mr. Aldemall.
-Community Center and Playground District Number 7 of Ward 2. I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Michael Aldemall by Mr. Latour and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. G, Mr. Eric Price, Community Center and Playground District Number 5 of Ward 5. Move, we have a motion to reappoint Mr. Eric Price by Mrs. Trimming and a second by Mr. Scott. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. H, Mr. William Bill L. Willis-
Second.
-Community Center and Playground District Number 4 of Ward 1. We have a motion to defer for 30 days by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. I, Mr. Daniel Palladino-
Move to reappoint Mr. Palladino.
-Community Center and Playground District Number 3 of Ward 7. We have a motion to reappoint Mr. Daniel Palladino by Mr. Farnham and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. J, Ms. Jeanette Peterson Teeter-
Move to reappoint.
-Community Center and Playground District Number 1 of Ward 6. Got a motion to reappoint Ms. Teeter by Ms. Trimming and a second by Mr. White. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. K, Mr. Mitch Bowers-
Move to reappoint Mr. Bowers.
-Community Center and Playground District Number 2 of Ward 4. We have a motion to reappoint Mr. Mitch Bowers by Mr. Farnham and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. L, Ms. Shelley Johnson-
Move to reappoint.
-Burton Coliseum Advisory Council. We have a motion to reappoint Ms. Johnson by Ms. Trimming and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Mr. Perry Vincent-
Move to reappoint.
-Burton Coliseum Advisory Council. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. Perry Vincent by Mr. White and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. N, Mr. Richard McGuire, Quality Assurance Review Panel for Ambulance Service Districts.
Move to reappoint.
Have a motion to reappoint Mr. Richard McGuire by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. O, Dr. John Gray, Quality Assurance Review Panel for Ambulance Services.
Second.
Got a motion to reappoint Mr. John, doctor, excuse me, Dr. John Gray by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Gilery. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. P, Ms. Deanne Smith, Quality Assurance Review Panel for Ambulance Services. Got a motion to reappoint Ms. Deanne Smith by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Latour. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. Q, Fire Chief Danny Dupree, Quality Assurance Review Panel for Ambulance Services. Got a motion to defer for 30 days from Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Farnham. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. R, Commander Vic Salvador, Quality Assurance Review Panel for Ambulance Services. Move, uh, we got a motion to reappoint Commander Vic Salvador by Mr. Collins and a second by Mr. Landry. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. S, Mr. Joe Palermo Jr.-
Second.
-West Calcasieu Airport Authority. Got a motion to reappoint Mr. Joe Palermo Jr. by Mr. Andrew Pont and a second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objection? Item carries. 20, take appropriate action-
Move to reappoint Mr. Ledoux.
-on the expiration of the term of Mr. Brian Ledoux as the governing authorities representative on the Calcasieu Parish Ward 7 Fire Protection District Number 1 Civil Service Board. We have a motion to reappoint by Mr. Farnham and a second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. 21, take appropriate action on a request by the Louisiana Workforce Commission to create an additional seat on the Workforce Development Board representing labor in the workforce and further adopting a resolution approving the appointment of Ms. Pat Richardson. Got a motion by Mr. Latour and a second by Ms. Mayo. Any discussion? Any objection? Motion carries. See, notice the advised items. Item 23.